Gress, 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 gress.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the twenty fifth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. I see there are no minutes to approve this afternoon, so we'll go directly into the hearing agenda. Starting with special license applications, calling agenda item number one. Applications number two, three dash zero, one, one, four, three, dash, one. Through application number two, three, dash, zero, one, one, four, three, dash, five inclusive from Mr. Sangria Bar LLC. Right here, sir. Thank you. Could you state and spell your name for the record?
Chester Johnson, K E S T E R, last name Johnson Sangria Bar.
Thank you, sir. Any comments or type of action from the commission?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Sorry, your last name again?
Johnson.
Johnson. So, Mr. Johnson, looking at, you know, your Exhibit A. Which is the floor plan area. Or the designated spot, so escalators going up and down, are they gonna be running?
Yes.
So is your licensed area going to include that or not include them? And if it is going to include them, how are you going to be planning to confirm no drinks will be going up or down the escalators? And people will not be coming into crowd drinks that are underage?
Technically, it will be, it will be housed off. Under the escalator, so the escalators would not be blocked whatsoever. Once you block that entire area off, you can come through, through the bar, it's a little area behind the elevator to get in and out, so it'll be one control.
Okay, and then how do you plan to? My best understanding of that area is pretty wide open, right?
It is.
Um, so how are you going to barricade or keep the licensed area enclosed?
They, they have the mall provides barricades for that entire area. But around my bar, there's a, there's a barricade around there as well.
Okay, and people like, you know, how many? I mean, that one point where you can get in and out, you know, how many people? Are you gonna be checking and banding, writing everybody there at that point?
Absolutely.
Okay, and you also gonna have, is your bartender is gonna be serving drinks, but also verifying if they seem to think someone's not? Or got passed somehow?
That, that will be done upfront, but absolutely, each bartender has to be trying to make sure that, make sure everyone is eligible.
And how many, and so how many? Don't know if I seen in the report, how many people you guys are looking to have each day, you have an estimated number?
If you're talking about customers and you're talking workers? Um, me, I, I, I count about seventy-five to a hundred at least.
Okay, then, I'm assuming you have a couple of bartenders and a few people making sure, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, this is a special general license, so this is in connection with a permanent license that you also apply for.
Correct, this is for a grand opening tasting event.
I move we approve application two, three, dash, zero, one, one, four, three, dash, one, two, twenty-three, dash, zero, one, one, four, three, dash, five.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the, I also vote I, the motion carries. Application number two, three, dash, zero, one, one, four, three, dash, one, through application number two, three, dash, zero, one, one, four, three, dash, five, uh, is approved. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Calling agenda item number two, application numbers two, three, dash, zero, one, two, two, nine, dash, one. Through two, three, dash, zero, one, two, two, nine, dash, four, zero, from Maragami, Udon, USA.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the commission, Mr. Ry Robert Wheel on behalf of Maragami, Udon, USA, President, Chief of Right, Mr. Tetsuya Ishihara, he's a general manager. First name T E T S U Y A, last name I S H I H A R A. This time we have no changes in investigative report, this is for an extension of the existing, a special liquor license for beer only. I'm Maragami located in downtown Honolulu, Porche.
Thank you, Mr. Ryoka. Um, any comments or questions or type of action from the commission?
So I, I just have a couple of questions, Mr. Ryoka. First thing is, so I'm looking on your Exhibit A seat plan, our floor plan. The section that's on the right-hand side, is that considered the outside seating or is that? A different area?
That is outside seating, correct.
Okay.
We, we, oh, okay, so we do have a stanchion though.
Stanchion area. You guys had any problems previously with any type of people either passing or? I mean, in that area is pretty busy harassing or anything of the people that are out there, I just trying to. Gauge to make sure everybody is kind of safe out there, right?
No problems, we're also fortunate that the Porche Mall private security situates themselves right outside that. Also, it's, it's good for us, it's not within our license premises, but we have people within the outdoor area to monitor as well.
And that, that swinging doorway, I'm assuming is only in, in one way, in one way out?
To the outdoor area, yes, we do have another entrance on the corner, um, the bottom right-hand side as well.
I move that we approve, then item two, application two, three, dash, zero, one, two, two, nine, dash, one, two, two, three, dash, zero, one, two, two, nine. Dash, four, zero.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, the motion carries. Uh, agenda item number two, application number two, three, dash, zero, one, fifty-nine, dash, one. Through two, three, dash, zero, one, two, two, nine, dash, four, zero are approved.
Thank you so much.
I think we just. Moving into preliminary hearings, uh, calling agenda item number three. Application number two, two, dash, two, four, three, four, seven from Enrique LLC.
Good afternoon, Chairman. I'm Reno Henriquez, last name H E N R I Q U E S. And to the right is my mom, Linda Henriquez, she'll be speaking on behalf of Fresh Catch. I should set her up. She's telling me. Our eyes will be.
Uh, do you have any changes to the investigative report?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments, or type of action from the commission?
So I just got one question, so I, looking at both your floor plans, Exhibit A. And, well, they're both Exhibit A listed in here, so. Is the entire space going to be considered licensed or is there just a specific space? Cause I didn't see any specific red markings, what they.
It was supposed to be the entire space.
Okay.
Did that, yes.
Yeah, so the entire space.
Correct.
So. On the, if you're looking at the floor plan on both end, right, is there a set of stairs?
Correct.
Do those stairs? Come into the premises in any way, shape, or form, and where do those stairs lead to?
So the stairs on the, on the left-hand side leads up into the kitchen.
Okay.
Area, and on the right-hand side, it leads up into the dining room.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's basic, so the question then becomes, okay, so.
The left side is basically for the, um, workers, employees. And then the right side on is, uh, come from the parking lot side.
Okay, so with the two sections. Both listed A, which is the top floor and which is the bottom floor, is the first one the top floor?
Uh, both stairs lead up to the top floor, second floor.
Okay, so looking at. Not sure if.
Right, or did we have the second, I'm sorry.
No, no, so there's two Exhibits A's listed in the packet, right?
Okay, correct, correct.
Is one the first floor and one the second floor?
First floor is the one that says, you can see storage on it.
Uh, sure.
It says first floor on the edge.
Sorry.
No, I'm looking at my.
Okay, so storage would be your first floor?
Yes.
Correct.
And the second floor is the dining area?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so then the question I'm going to ask is, since they're both A and one is a first floor and a second floor. Are both floors considered going to be licensed, full licensed areas?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And so customers going up to the second floor, you can go make sure it's like, you know, the same people that are coming in and you're gonna sink there.
Basically, our, our hours are downstairs, we're gonna do like a regular fresh catch from ten to. Six o'clock and then shut down the bottom floor.
True.
And then upstairs, it'll be upstairs from six to nine thirty, ten o'clock.
Okay, okay, and so the. Uh, service for alcohol is gonna be during both open time, period time period?
Yes.
Okay. All right. It's all the questions I have, thank you.
So in the takeout area. And, and you're serving. Where are they gonna be drinking? On the downstairs.
In the pokey area and the takeout area.
Yeah, so the downstairs takeout area, the little pokey area and the little.
It's a little eating area, it's right in between the storage and the. Takeoff, there's an area there.
You can see the two bathrooms.
Toilet.
Yeah, women's toilet and then the storage. A little section over there, who's gonna put up on a little.
It has the bench.
Benches.
All right.
Not, it's not, it's mostly just for takeout fast, maybe have a cocktail, but that's about it.
Got it, so that, in that area, about how many tables you think you're gonna run?
Uh, we just have three eight-foot benches.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a whole seating area yet.
The only thing I would recommend is as we move forward, right, because this is under the preliminary hearing side, um. There might be more questions regarding how you're gonna make sure those people.
Okay.
Are not passing drinks in that seating area on the downside, okay, because obviously we're assuming families might come to get pokey and everything. We just wanna make sure that the alcohol is controlled by those that are the age to be able to drink.
Correct.
Okay?
Yeah.
I have another question.
We're gonna only do root beer down there.
No, no, no. I'm sure some people would like some beer with their.
Well, I, I move that we approve agenda item three, application two, two, dash, two, four, three, four, seven.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, the motion carries. Jen item number three, application number two, two, dash, two, four, three, four, seven is approved, thank you.
Thank you, guys, happy New Year's days.
Calling agenda item number four, application number two, two, dash, two, four, nine, two, one, from Earth Food USA.
Um, Chair Buckley, with respect to this item, uh, attorney, as a representative attorney, Gotai, and his backup counsel are not able to appear today. Uh, they have requested that this matter be, uh, rescheduled to the January twenty-sixth meeting.
Okay, um, thank you, this matter, agenda item number four will be continued to the January twenty-sixth calendar. Uh, me too, other business, agenda item number five, request number two, three, dash, zero, one, three, five, seven, from Better Bites Thai LLC, Mr. Nish.
Good afternoon, Chair members, Commission, good news, you have authorized agent appearing on behalf of the requesting party.
Could you summarize your request, please?
Yeah, basically, um. This, uh, the applicant. Better, um, Better Bites Thai is taking over the former Puket Thai restaurant space. And, um, in order to, basically, as our request states to enhance the dining experience, we like to. The plan is to try and get a temp- temporary license while the. Permanent, uh, application is pending.
Yeah.
Uh, we do know that the actual footprint is being, is smaller, six hundred square foot smaller. Than from the original Puket Thai, there is a, the landlord has put up a dividing wall, wall already there. So that's permanently deleted, it's part of the next door unit, actually.
When, um, the Puket Thai exited that premises?
I believe, um. Maybe, but, but I would, my guess, 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 I mean, would be about two years ago.
Been a long time for temporary license applications, but this is just a request you have to file the temporary.
Correct.
Uh, any other comments, questions, or type of action from the commission?
So I think, so. You said you sugar, so the, the divide point between the red and the blue lines, there's a permanent wall now there.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, and so the only entrance point for your actual section is the one that's. Right before that blue line, right?
Correct.
Doors that walk in there, right, and then they can get out to the other seating area, right?
Correct, and I believe, right, there is, if you look to the left, I did believe there's another exit.
I see it now, okay.
And. I believe on the right bottom corner, but I'm not sure what there is.
Yeah, I said doorway over there too, but, you know, as we go through the process, though.
I think that's an entry to the kitchen, very, very.
All right, I have another question.
Yeah, I move we approve agenda item number five, request two, three, dash, zero, one, three, five, seven.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries. Jen item number five, request number two, three, dash, zero, one, three, five, seven is approved, thank you, Mr. Nishoka.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioner.
Uh, Commissioners, could I get a motion for agenda item number six?
Motion for adoption of findings of fact, conclusions of law, decision in order for agenda item number six.
Second, there's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries. Uh, adoption of findings of fact, conclusions of logic decisions in order for agenda item number six is approved.
Also make a motion for adoption of decision in order for agenda item seven through eighteen inclusive.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries. Uh, decision in order for agenda item number seven through agenda item number eighteen inclusive is approved. It's time we're going to move into adjudication hearings, loves Jacob's.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the commission, Daniel Jacob, Deputy Corporation Counsel on behalf of the city and county of Honolulu.
Good afternoon. Uh, calling agenda item number nineteen, LCV two, one, dash, zero, four, five, zero, Chop Chop Porche Street. I want to hear for agenda item number nineteen.
I'll represent that, I did, uh, leave a message for the owner, I did get ahold of one individual who gave me the owner's name, Kevin Haney. I left a message at the number I have for him, and that was also given to me, and I did not get a response. Um, I will indicate that, um, the records show the individual, the licensee was served. On January the twenty twenty-three, so if there's no appearance, all that's written.
Oh, yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, please come up, sir. And could you state and spell your name for the record?
Uh, my name's Kevin Haney, H A N N E Y.
Hello, Mr. Haney.
Hi.
How are you? Mr. Jacobs, can you please read the charge?
Honor about November first, twenty twenty-one, licensee failed to timely submit the name of every person then employed on the licensed premise. Who is registered with the commissioner is subject to registration on the date and in such manner as directed by the commission. In violation of rule three, dash, eighty-two, dash, thirty-eight point eight of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
And, Mr. Haney, how would you like to plead?
I plead guilty with an explanation.
Okay. Motion to accept the plea, second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations? Uh, seeing none, I also vote I, uh, the motion carries, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, was your recommendation?
Yeah, this first time violation, recommended by its twenty fifty hours.
Two hundred and fifty, okay, well, Mr. Haney, what is your explanation?
Well, it was, uh, the middle of the pandemic, I had. Three closed restaurants and was reopening two at that time, uh, not Chop Chop, and it just, uh, it got overlooked. Which was closed.
Yeah, I was gonna say, were you operating at all?
No.
At that time.
No.
Um, do you remember if you got a notice, um, through email or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember, I mean, I probably did, and it just got through everything with all the payoffs going up.
I'll represent to the commission that all licenses are mailed a letter asking them to submit their annual employee list, licensee received their letter, or is dated September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jacobs. My recommendation is going to be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number nineteen.
Second. There's been a motion in the second. And objections or reservations? Hearing none, uh, the motion, I also vote I, the motion carries, letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item number nineteen.
Thank you.
Agenda item number twenty, LCV two, two, dash, zero, zero, five, eight, David Buster's. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, uh, Chairman, members of the Liquor Commission. My name is Lincoln Ashida. Uh, you normally see my partner, Newton Chu, here, who is currently traveling. To exotic places unknown. So, um, I'm here on behalf of, uh, items twenty and twenty-one, Dave and Buster's.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Um, for purposes of, uh, both charges, you wanna take them one at a time, we should take them one at a time, right?
Of course.
With respect to item number twenty. Um, first of all, we respectfully waive our client's presence for purposes of this hearing only. Uh, we received a copy of the complaint, I reviewed it, uh, with our client. We understand the contents of the allegations against them. Uh, consent to the entry of the words and figures as if read, read into the record, we reading of the charge. And we respectfully, please, contest.
Thank you.
Motion to accept the plea, second.
There's a motion and a second, uh, any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, the plea is accepted.
Honest, Jacob, please.
This violation occurred on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, when the licensee failed to immediately suppress multiple bites occurring in the front lot of the premises. Uh, the facts of this case are that when liquor investigators arrived. There was an altercation between a bouncer, um, employed by Dave and Buster's and a customers. The bouncer was seen escalating the altercation with the customers. Uh, the other bouncers did nothing to diffuse the situation. This is a first time record, uh, violation of recommended fine is one thousand dollars.
Mr. She, she does. Yeah, can I comment on that?
Any comment?
Yeah, thank you, um, this afraid involved, um. Three local brothers who walked into the, um, restaurant. As I understand it, they, they were never served. They've never served alcohol at Dave and Buster's. From the management of the report, and this is confirmed through the surveillance video. Trouble started right away, as soon as they walked in, before they even ordered anything or anything. Um, it's true that, um, Dave and Buster's, um. Security were, uh, you know, uh. It was necessary that they restrained the individuals. But, um, I think that the situation with respect to the, um, the one. Security officer who was, um. Observed escalating the situation, I think it was a result of, um. You know, he was basically getting pounded on, talking to three guys at the time. Um, suffice it to say, irrespective of whether they were served or not. Even Buster's understands and appreciates it's their place. They're responsible for it, and therefore they accept the responsibility.
Question I would have is. Mr. She did, is, um, all of the security guards still employed with you folks, or have you changed some people, or, I mean? You know what I mean, I mean?
This is April, yeah, this incident, I don't know, I can find that out, but I, I, I don't know.
Okay.
Uh, you mentioned that it, it happened almost immediately when these three individuals came into the premises. And do you have any understanding as to why that seems odd to me that, that they would just come in and immediately fight with the suit?
You know, um, you know, I saw the video, and it's almost like, uh. Um. Troublemakers. Yeah. And, um. You know, they're all dressed the same, sort of, uh. A uniform, if you are similar clothing, you can get my drift. And, um, I think they were making trouble.
Were there any explanation from anyone, uh, the staff or otherwise as to why that might have been, uh, or is that unknown?
No, yeah. I don't know.
And, and you, you said that, um, the footage shows that it, it looks as though one of the employees is escalating the situation.
Well, I think. No, I think the allegation was that, with respect to the, um, inspector's observation, he observed that the. On the security guard was escalating, um. Um, you know, it may very well, very well may have been, but I did not see that.
And the footage doesn't show when we're here?
But, but we, we don't, you know, we don't, uh. We're not here to. Contest that part, if, if that's what they saw, that's what they saw.
But does the footage show the three individuals coming in?
Yeah.
And immediately escalating the situation on their arrival? And it would seem to me, I don't wanna put words into your mouth or, or video, but does the video show that? The, the employees are reacting to those individuals coming in? Or are they approaching as individuals?
Well, not, not immediately, they're actually sort of, uh, hassling customers at first. You know, so it's, it's not like. An immediate, they come in, and then they start, you know, then the security guards are on them, there, there, there's definitely some time. And actually, it was just, as I understand it, Mr., um. Deputy Court Counsel, you confirm this or not, but it was just fortuitous that the liquor inspector showed up at that particular time.
Mr. Jacob, I have a couple of questions, if you know, do you know about what time this incident happened or occurred?
The investigators arrived at, um, one twenty-five AM.
Okay, so, uh, the follow-up question I guess I would have for you, Mr. Ashida, that time period, did you have people that are checking guys? At the door coming into Dave and Buster's, do you know?
I don't know, but they sure.
Okay, okay, and then did the altercation happen on the first floor, or did it go up? Into the gaming second floor area?
No, I believe this is first floor.
First floor area, okay.
Was the police called for any of this?
Yes, they were. They, they eventually showed up, and. I believe that. He, um, one of the assailants who assaulted your investigator who was arrested, see. And is that?
Yeah, my report does not mention any of that.
How about your employees, anything, the police?
No, no, I'm not a police officer. But, but you mean if they're arrested or?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, my motion is going to be to approve a fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item first one.
Second. There's been a motion. By in a second, any objections or reservations? I vote I with reservations, I do find this to be a very curious situation, and the facts are, um, just curious, so I had to have reservations. Um, but I also vote I, so the motion carries, the fine is approved for agenda item number twenty.
Thank you. Thank you, Ashida.
Uh, calling agenda item number twenty-two, LCV two, two, dash, zero, one, five, for Dave and Buster's.
Oh, good afternoon, Commissioner, uh, Chairman Commissioners. Lincoln Ashida appearing on behalf of. Uh, Dave and Buster's, we have, uh, the purposes of this hearing, we waive. The appearance of our client. Um, we have received a written copy of the, uh. Investigative report and the allegation, we waive public reading thereof, consent to the word, enter the words and figures into the record as if read to the record. We respectfully plead no contest.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any, uh, objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, the plea is accepted.
Sir Jacobs.
This violation occurred on December eighth, twenty twenty-two, when licensee permitted entertainment which caused in. Um, noise and complaints from the public, uh, causing an undue disruption of the public. Um, the customers were yelling at one fifty-two AM. The employees of Dave and Buster's failed to disperse the crowd. This is a first offense, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars, however, licensee is at three prior warnings. The first warning was on August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. The second warning is October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. The third warning was on December first, twenty twenty-two, again, this happened December eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Ashid, any comments?
Uh, yes, this, um. Since this, um, incident occurred. Um. Even Buster's together with the landlord, they beefed up the special duty presence, as a matter of fact. It went up to, I'm gonna say it's, uh, or officers, because I know they're required now to have a sergeant. On, um. It's part of specialty, I should know that because I'm a foreign prosecutor, I think it's, so I think it's minimum five at this point. Um, so that was through a cooperative effort, uh, with the landlord. Um, I know there was some allegation, when I read through the report, there was at least some allegation that. Um. You know, or some of, uh, the early on reports that all the guys were, the police officers were not doing anything, so. They, you know, they, we talked to HPD about that, increase the number, also, we have two parts. Uh, blue and whites on the street on every Wednesday night. So, um, since this occurred, um, you know, thankfully. You know, things are, are better, and I believe this is not gonna happen.
So these weren't the sounds of music, this was the.
No, these are, these are guys mumping off the stage as they need.
So I guess my one question could be, so. There was three prior. Issues or incidents that happened, right? Was, what, was there any discussion at that point prior to becoming the fourth one? Where we talked about getting some more presents or more things like that, because obviously as it continues, right, it becomes. More that, what are you folks doing to control this portion of it, right?
Yeah. Um, I think that. One of the issues was, um. The, um. Building, uh, landlord was also paid for the, the special duty.
Okay.
So, at this point, you know, I guess, like, even Buster's, we just, we just don't take care of this. Because this, because, I mean, let's face it, why are we here? Their liquor licenses. It's important to them, you know, it can be, we're wrong with stuff like this, so.
Me too, I mean, that area is also growing in more of an area where more people are living now, right?
Yeah.
Prior, right, that might not have been as much area for noise to really matter, but now you do have. Condos on all three sides of you, there's more coming, right, so. Obviously. Need to work. Towards some things, because December eighth, Mr. J, was that a Wednesday, or do you know what date that was?
Um. The seventh, uh, yeah, well, it's a Wednesday night, but it's Thursday.
Thursday morning, if you didn't get a bar, right? I'm just saying, that area, people are gonna be sleepy, trying to be ready for work the next day, right? My motion is going to be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number. My motion is going to be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number twenty-one.
Like, there's been a motion and a second, any objections, reservations, seeing none, I also vote I, the motion carries, they find a. Dollar for agenda item number twenty-one.
Thank you very much, appreciate you, folks.
Calling agenda item number twenty-two L C V two-one dash zero four five nine Earl E that. Even a real lunch.
And it was Justin, last name Parvizi Motla, P A R V I C I M O T L A G H.
Uh, Mister Jacob, can you read the charge? Honor about November first, twenty twenty-one, licensee, there all the time, we submit the name of every person then employed on my licensed premise who is registered with the commission or was subject to registration on the date and in such manner as directed by the commission. The violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point eight of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county. Now I'm going to watch this really bad and I excuse me, Mister Parvizi.
Uh, Parvizi Motla.
Parvizi.
Yeah.
Um, how would you like to be?
Uh, guilty.
Motion to accept the plea. Uh, second.
There's been a motion in the second, can we uh objection the reservations, seeing here is none, I also vote I, the motion carries, the please accept it.
Mister Jacob, your recommendations? It's a first time violation, the recommended fine. Mister Parvizi.
That's pretty close.
Sorry, really bad, uh, any explanations?
Uh, just got caught up with the day-to-day operations of my business and just failed to submit it. Um, I did receive notice and um, but I still failed to meet the necessary deadline to submit the list.
Mister on Jacob, do you have anything in your file when it was actually submitted? Unfortunately, we're not good at that information. Do you have any idea? When you may have submitted it?
Oh, no, I I did not submit the actual list, I received a written notice saying that like I needed to. And so I did receive the notice, but I still was unable to complete it and submit it by the 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 deadline.
Okay. And you guys, on those dates in November, because we're still running and open.
Yes, we were, we were still open, yeah.
My motion is going to be to give issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number twenty-two, second.
There's been a motion in the second, any objections or reservations, seeing hearing none, I also vote I, the motion carries. Um, a letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item number twenty-two.
Okay, thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty-three L C V one-nine dash zero zero eight seven misty one.
I'll represent to the commission that I've had no luck reaching this licensing.
No, it's not. Like it's a problem, keep you to appear. The commission served me as the authorized agent, that is not my client, it's Ken's client. Just to clarify. The reason why I'm listed as the authorized agent is because if you recall, this was became my client's establishment. We worked out a deal to transfer the license to my client, that deal requires that. The seller sign, and that's why it was the authorized agent, but this occurred under Michigan, one, my client operates it as way by night. So I've talked to Mister Who, Mister Who was unaware of this. Um. I'm kind of not real happy with being being sent this, um, I'm kind of, to be honest, not real happy with some of the. Stuff I've been served with, because I don't think people check. Uh, but nevertheless, Mister Who will be appearing, so would ask that he continue.
I'll represent, um, I I don't ever dispute, like Mister K, she says, however, I do have a notice. That was served on the owner of July fifteenth and twenty twenty, and the commissioner will remember. Uh, we only serve physical notice the first time and subsequently it's via email, so I would guess that. That probably was receiving email.
No, I I received a physical letter.
As well.
Yeah.
Uh, I, you know, the the copy that I do have, those that were signed by. Name, that's not after K U C's um title is O W E, I would assume that's owner, I I'm not sure if we can make. Who that?
Yeah, that's the previous, that's the licensing.
Is that the current licensee or?
No, that's the previous.
I have no objection to the request.
And we'll continue this matter to the next available.
Uh, February twenty-third, please.
It's rise, February twenty-third, an acceptable date for.
Yeah. Yes, it is. And I'll remind the commission, uh, starting actually tonight, this is, we're holding the last Thursday of each month for all continuing cases. So anytime someone requests a continuance in January, it'll be set February, press February, we've set for the last Thursday in March, and we'll we'll abide by that. And thank you, Mister Jacobs.
So agenda item number twenty-three is continued to the February. Um, it's maybe the same, but calling agenda item number twenty-four L C V one-nine dash zero three one zero misty one.
Again, you should make an especial appearance, I would ask that this matter for the same reason be continued to February twenty-third.
Objection.
Thank you, gentlemen, uh, agenda item number twenty-four, will be continued to the February twenty-third calendar. Agenda item number twenty-five L C V two-zero dash one zero one two four club secrets.
Uh, good afternoon, Chair members of the commission, keep you to for the licensee, we would ask. That this be continued, uh, so we can get the investigative reports to February twenty-third.
No objection.
Thank you, gentlemen, uh, agenda item number twenty-five will be continued to the February twenty-third year. Calling agenda item number twenty-six L C V two-two dash zero zero one one club secret, Mr. K.
Again, keep keep, good afternoon, Chair members of the commission, keep you for the licensee. For the same reason, we'd ask this be continued to. February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
No objection.
Thank you, gentlemen, uh, agenda item number twenty-six will be continued to be February twenty-third year calendar. Calling agenda item number twenty-seven L C V two-zero dash zero zero two six melody LLC.
Represent the commission, I did get a hold of Chelsea Maja. Um. Well surprised she's not here, generally I would hear from her, I'm checking my email to see. I don't have an email from her, um.
I think they're calling in the hallway to make sure she's not available.
So for the record, uh, Chelsea Maja was the backup attorney to Neil Gota. My understanding is she is, um, she may still be out of the office, so. I don't know if she represented that she was going to make an appearance today or not.
You know, um, I'm I'm going to give her the benefit of the doubt and and believe since I do have notes that I contact her. Um, I I'll give her the benefit of the doubt and say that I don't remember an email asking for a contingency, so um. I I don't know that's true, but I will request a continuance on her behalf of February twenty-third.
Thank you, Mister Jacobs, uh, agenda item number twenty-seven, it's continued to the February twenty-third year calendar. Calling agenda item number twenty-eight L C V two-one dash zero two four one thumbs up markets, it's to huge.
I'll represent to the commission that licensee previously entered a plea of no contest, and this is uh being called back for consideration of the appropriate amount of discipline.
That's correct, uh, good afternoon, again, sir Chair, members of the commission, keep YouTube. With the uh representing the licensee to my right is Tim A, last name H E.
Mister Jacobs, what is your recommendation?
This was a five hundred dollar recommended fine, and I'll remind the commission that uh licensee had previously uh had no contest for failing to comply with commission order by signing all the highway, it's licensed with this.
Yeah, I I'm going to go through um pretty lengthy explanation, because I have met twice now with Mister A. Because I understand the seriousness, this is service of alcohol. While the license was suspended, and I first want to. Form the commission, why the license was suspended, it was suspended for two weeks. There's a prior violations that occurred on December seventh, two thousand nineteen. January thirtieth, twenty twenty, and November fourteenth, twenty twenty, they were all for the same violation, which was service to a minor. So uh. Frankly, the more critical problem is addressing uh. Stop in service to minors. The location is four eleven North King Street, and just give you some context, that is. Right across from Allah Park. Um, and near this now scattered First Hawaiian Bank. That is for. Charitably a rough area, um, the Burger King has been long closed on that corner. You go further in the First Hawaiian Bank recently closed, uh. The shops along that uh one building that remains includes the market and two. Food places, there was a retail place that closed. It's challenging because you got a lot of homeless over at Allah Park. Um. And. It's it's a difficult area. Mister Hay took over the market from his brother, so it became funded with family funds, including his mother and father. Um, he had to take it over because the brother basically didn't want to do it anymore, uh. And the family committed to lease, so therefore they were a little bit at risk. That doesn't excuse the prior violations, and I've talked to Mister A, how uh. He's got. He's got to. Tighten that up. So on the night in question. His father, who's, how old is your father?
Fifty-two, fifty-three.
Was the cashier, uh, they had. Closed off. The area where the beer was, but they didn't seal or tape the cooler, they didn't block it off or anything like that. The uh, best scam report shows that a woman was drinking beer outside, the tape actually shows that there's a man that goes and starts arguing with Mister Hayes' father. Um, I asked for Mister here, why the father sold the the alcohol, sold the alcohol because the man was being. More than quote aggressive, the purchase took place at about seven fifty-eight PM. Uh, at that point, the store normally closed at eight thirty, but they closed the store right after that, the father was a little. Shaken by the incident, that doesn't excuse them. Selling it because frankly, they they accepted money for the alcohol. Uh, so I've asked him what he's done since after the incident occurred, he put tape up to seal the cooler. To prevent any uh sales from taking place. He's also closed the market. Earlier, he closes it now at eight PM. It's frankly, that's a tough area after hours, and even at eight PM, I think it's a toughish. Uh. I'm, you know, he's. He's trying to do his best. In terms of running the market, I would point out, he has not had a violation since the November fourteen, twenty twenty violation for selling to a minor. This violation occurred because. His father sold when he shouldn't have been selling because they were suspended. Uh, because I said I've met with him twice now. And I think. He's very much aware of what he needs to do to prevent this in the future.
Mr. K, is your father um usually working behind the counter or is that a circumstance that was not all?
At that time, his father was working.
Yeah.
Yes, he's not working as much anymore, right?
No, when we, right now, I stay in the store, yeah.
Till eight o'clock.
Yes.
Because you're kind of concerned about your father not being able to deal with that.
So I have some questions, Mister K, so the prior incidents, right, that you had. Um, in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, was that while the brother was running it?
That's when he was running.
Right, and um, I guess my question is, is were those incidents based off of? Like. His father or him himself making?
Combination.
Combination.
Two of the incidents were actually with him. And it's more a matter of, in my view, of not. Receiving proper training. Um, you can get training from the commission, but that's not training. Um, you know, I, with all due respect, I think he's got to get more. Understanding of not selling to minors, and I think he's much more aware that now. I think the fact that there have been no violations for over two years, I think, uh, helps. But yeah, those were under the law.
Um. Mr. Jacobs' question, do you know if the? The suspension for the two weeks, was that based off of the twenty twenty violations for selling to the minor? I I have a copy of the decision in order, um, right now, I I will mention that the suspension was for thirty days.
Thirty days.
At the liquor commission, I'll I'll read the decision regarding the liquor commission hearing on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, the above name licensee was represented by Wayne Luke. Um, but no contest with explanation in regards to selling liquor to a minor, uh, so so yeah, it does look like. Um, for the violation of selling to a minor, they were suspended for thirty days. I shouldn't I have this, wait, do you have anything that shows when the thirty days started? Uh, yes, effective fifteen days from the date of service of the decision and order, so it looks like. The date uh that it was served was June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, so that would have put on interruptively July twenty-seventh. Okay. So we're talking almost toward the end of the thirty days at that point, right?
Yeah.
Uh, K, can you, do you know if that was like one of the first only days or that the father had been working or? Yeah, I mean, I mean, was this like one of the times he was working in the thirty days or?
Up until that point, the father was normally there.
Okay.
But not on any extended shifts, since then, the father hasn't been there at that point, at that point in the evening. Um, my thinking is that it's later in the evening that creates more of a problem. Which is why Mister A is now there later in the evening. Um. Frankly, maybe they should consider closing earlier, but that's separate business decision he's got to make. Um, but the father. Works sporadically since then, I think. The father was a little shaken up by the aggressiveness, but it was not a female that was aggressive, the female was the one with the alcohol, it was a male that was aggressive.
Yes, and the male was aggressive, but it was sold, female had it, I guess, I'm just trying to find out during those thirty days, right? Was he working a lot or was he filling in here and there?
I think filling in here and there was probably the best, the best uh. Characterization, but he was working at sometimes up up until eight thirty at night. At one point, the market was open till nine o'clock at night.
I know this violation doesn't involve a minor, but the previous violations did, so you've mentioned there's been some work involved in attempting to um. Improve upon uh that that issue, wh- what are some of those improvements that?
Well, he he, I I think part of the problem is he wasn't asking for ID, he's now asking everybody for ID. Which I think makes a huge difference. I don't think in any of the three previous incidents, the ID was asked, I think that's what concerned. I mean, I'm speculating, that probably would concern the commission, concern me, we don't ask for an ID. So at least at a minimum, you ask for the ID. And you don't. Even start looking, well, he looks old enough to buy, you don't even parse it up that way, so.
And Mister K, I'm super glad so far we have not had any other incidents in this situation of minors, that's really great. My my bigger concern to some degree, right, is there was a penalty given and. You know, selling it. I mean, I know I got aggressive, I understand that, you know, he feared for his own safety and things like that, but my concern is. The the us saying, telling people they shouldn't be selling is in a sense because they made some mistakes. And then, but yet to sell what it isn't something you should be doing, then there is a concern there of like, well, how do we? Well, I I mean, I'm just saying, that's my own.
No, I, and that's, that's an absolutely valid observation, because. The whole problem, the commission meets out a penalty, whatever that penalty is. It's the licensee's job to follow the commission's penalty.
Hmm.
Um, and then in this case, what actually should have happened was measures to. Lock off the cooler, tape the cooler or whatever.
Hmm.
Um, I asked him, you know, is it possible to lock the cooler, and he said, no. That's why he got the idea, maybe if I tape it. Uh, that's kind of what should have happened, but didn't happen, um. He, yeah. Hate to say this, if it was my client and the third time, there would have been a different discussion that occurred after the third time. But um. The discussion that has occurred with him now should have occurred after the third time, so just like.
I'm I'm sorry, I know you said this already, but three prior prior uh incidents, were they under the brothers?
No, it was under his watch.
We're gonna make a motion to, for the commission to. Remembering. Can we do that there, we can read versus. Executive session.
I believe we can liberate counsel. I believe we can simply deliver it, deliver it without going into executive session.
Alright, so I'm gonna make a motion uh, to uh, deliberate.
There's a motion and a second, uh, any objections or reservations? Hearing none, I also what I motion carries uh, the commission's integration. Okay, thank you, we are back uh, on the record, uh, commissioners, do we have a motion or paper action?
Yes, um, my motion is going to be. To suspend the license for two weeks.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, are there any objections or reservations? Hearing or seeing that, I also vote I, the motion carries uh, license for Club Street is suspended for two. Weeks for agenda number six.
I think that's fair. Appreciate that, thank you.
Agenda, uh, calling agenda item number twenty nine, L C V twenty two dash zero zero one six Yard House.
Uh, I think he just separated the bathroom. Oh, it's gonna be.
Okay, okay, and there he is. Well, we'll, we'll call it again, agenda item number twenty nine, L C V two two dash zero zero one six Yard House, oh, sorry. We beat you back.
Always the case in every court. It's the bathroom rule, I go to the bathroom, the judge calls the case, uh, good afternoon, committee, uh, Chair Commissioners, Lincoln Ashida appearing. On behalf of Yard House. Uh, with respect to item twenty nine, the complaint. We respectfully waive uh. Presence of the client for purposes of this hearing only. Receive the copy of the complaint, waive public reading thereof. Consent to the entry of the words and figures therein as if read into the record. Respectfully plead no contest charge with an explanation.
Motion to accept the plea, second.
There's been a motion and a second, any objections or reservations, seeing or hearing none, I also would I, the motion carries, certainly accepted.
I'm Mr. Jacobs, you're as violation per February third, twenty twenty two, and the licensee employed a new individual who was not properly registered with the commission, this is a first time violation.
Mister Shida, your explanation.
Thank you, sir. Um, in this case, there actually was a manager on duty who had a blue card. It just happened that uh. The manager that was cited in training. She just recently moved from Idaho, was relocated from their store in Idaho. Her first day was January fourteen. This citation, I believe, was uh. February third. She got her card. February seventh, which is four days later. On that day in question, there actually was a manager. On duty with uh. His card. So it wasn't, it's a situation where there was, you know, nobody there with the card. It would happen here, but she. I think uh, reading the allegation. She attended to some customers that were seated. The violation. Ways about it, so hence the no contest, that's it.
Um, so Jacob, questions, does it show anywhere in your file that? They did check to see if there are any other managers around duty with a card.
Uh, you know what, I think what's a little interesting about this case is it was charged as a failure to register an employee, however, the individual. Who I think was not registered was uh, acting as a manager. Um, the investigative report says that upon entering. They requested to speak with the manager on duty. A female, uh, the individual who was not registered presented herself as the manager on duty. Um, they requested her manager blue card. Transton stated, the employee said that she did not have a card because she'd recently um, been hired. Uh, asked if there was another blue cold, blue card holder on duty because it's required. As she said, she will contact someone to find out who else has a blue card. Waited for uh, a manager, observed. Uh, the employee has continued to assist other people, it does not look. Well, finally, a female manager by the name of X identified by her blue card arrived.
Okay. Okay, so um, as you should, I guess my thing would be. He's hiring, make sure, you know, that. Going forward to have a card, cause they're gonna serve, right?
And for, sir.
My motion is going to be to approve the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
There's been a motion and second, any objections or reservations here and you're seeing, and I actually vote I, the motion carries a fine of three hundred and fifty dollars to be a huge virgin.
Thank you for the seven one point, my.
And the item number thirty, L C V two one dash zero four eight three bar cocoa. Good afternoon. Hi, good afternoon, your name.
Pardon?
Please state and spell your name.
Mahmoud Nazamlu. M A H M O U D. Is on this N E Z A M L.
Thank you, this is the contested case hearing.
Yeah, I'll provide for the commission that licensee had a previously appeared before the commission, there was two charges in this file, he accepted. The first charge, which had to do with feeling to have adequate time card, he denied the second charge, which is what we're here for today. And that's license's use of electronic timekeeping without permission approval.
Jacob, is there any agreements or stipulation as to facts or evidence?
Yes, I, I think it would be appropriate at this time to ask uh, the licensee if he wished to proceed to contested base hearing.
Very well, um. Would you like to proceed? Do you have any exhibits or witnesses?
Uh, yes, I, I submet that the, the time sheet. Um, what's happening, it, it is a time they can explain or?
I was just asking about evidence.
Oh, yes.
So you have one exhibit, a time sheets, and we see here, we have defense exhibit one, is it time sheets? Is that correct? Is that the only exhibit you submitted?
Yes.
Okay, so the commission accepts into evidence to defense exhibit number one.
Yeah, we've, uh, we've stipulated that, um, the evidence may be submitted.
Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, so we will also admit it to evidence prosecution's exhibit A. Does that also mean, Mister Jacobs, that you have no, there are no witnesses?
Correct, we've agreed to stipulate to the facts.
Thank you, so there will be no witnesses, is that correct? Thank you, so there will be no witnesses for this matter. I think we can proceed then to directly to our attorney.
So I'll represent to the commission again, that this is uh, in regards to one of two charges, the first charge had been previously um, resolved. Charge two is, the allegation is that on December eighteen, twenty twenty one. The licensee used like, utilized an electronic or otherwise record payroll registration. For the purpose of keeping employee time cards without first obtaining administrator's approval in violation of rule three dash eighty two. Dash thirty eight point four C, now I will allow Mister Nazamlu, of course, to. Um, um, to tell his facts, but my understanding with conversations with him. Is that when investigators arrived on the scene that day, they asked an employee for the time records. Mister Nazamlu is re- uh, represented to me that that employee at that time had realized that she had not signed in. Using their paper time cards, so in order to not cause a fuss, I understand that she created. On the spot essentially, an electric record of her uh, timekeeping. Uh, I will have the uh. Mission look. At the picture the investigator showed or took of the. Time card, I don't, you see that? So as you can see here, it's, it's an iPhone, um, on the clock, bar cocoa. It doesn't have a, a specific date, however, it says this week, and this is what the individual presented. Uh, to the investigator at that day. Again, Mister Nazamlo is represented that, um, although they had previously did use an electronic software timekeeping. System, liquor investigators had previously uh, arrived on the scene and told him. That he needed a commission approval for use of that software. At that time, Mister Nazamlo was represented that they stopped using the electronic. Uh, system, and they went back to paper, but again, the day the investigator showed up. The individual employee the investigator spoke to realized she had not signed in, I believe she knew that was a violation. So she fabricated this electronic record. I, I do believe there's sufficient grounds to um, to, to find that the licensee did. Violate the use of electronic, it's employee represented that they did use one. To the extent that Mister Nazamlu says that they weren't using it that particular day, this certainly evidenced use of it at one point. Though there is no um, intention as to the fact that the licensee did not seek approval. Uh, for use of any electronic system at any time, and there's admission that there was one, and then also this fabrication. Uh, to cover up another. Uh, violation, that's all I have, thank you.
Mister Jacobs, do you know what um, software is used on this app we're looking at?
I do not, um, and I think Mister Nazamlu, I can't remember if I asked you, but I certainly would trust um, what he would respond, this is. Or would describe this as.
Um, could you share any other questions for Mister Jacobs?
No.
Sure.
Yes, um, so. Just to give a summary about the business and. As you see, uh, probably. We don't have, we don't have that much employee because, you know. Uh, it's hard to hire and keep employees. And that's why we, most of the times we go to just take out uh, only. No dining, and she was basically that time she was the only. Employee that willing to show up to work. Um, she, when, when I asked her about the um. Situation, uh, I, because before pre- previously, we had the pure system. That we used to have them clocking and out on the pure system, and we got uh. Notified by liquor commission that. We have to register that one, and that's, that's gonna be a hard uh, situation, so we, we started. Probably like, I guess it was like two, three years ago. Uh, to the time she, and last hearing that I had here also. Uh, one of the evidence that they had was time sheet. I did not uh, show uh, any pure system or anything. To prove that the employees there, they were um, clocking. And uh, this time, when I went there, she told me that uh, they asked for time sheet, and since. And since she never uh put in her last couple days. She decided to show her own phone, uh, which, um, because she had two jobs. If you have noticed, it's like a Navy exchange, she was at Navy exchange too. So she, I guess it's her own pri- uh private uh recording that uh. I don't know if she put it probably that moment to just make sure that she's not gonna get in trouble. Uh, it was a bad decision for her because uh we already uh. Accepted that she didn't clock in. But the the fact that we we did not use uh any uh electronic device. Since uh two, three years ago, that we've got notified by liquor commission. And also the time sheet is available every uh pay period like that. First to fifteen, sixteen to end of the month. And this is what I present is the page that is for sixteen to end of the month. Uh, and yeah, that's that's about it. I ask her to uh putting her time. And also continue doing that. But uh, of course, couple months after, she couldn't handle it and she could.
Mister Nazamlu?
Yes.
Yes, um, and I'm understanding you to say that the electronic record from the employee that she showed wasn't really.
No, okay.
Mission along on the questions and looking at the time sheet you provided, right? As evidence, so she is listed on twelve eighteen, twenty twenty one with some time. Four thirty to ten ten. So did she fill that in after? Cause was the eighteenth the day that the incident happened? December eighteen, twenty twenty one?
Yeah, after, after I got there and she told me about it, I asked her to put her in time.
Okay, okay. Has she filled it in after?
Yes.
Okay, so it wasn't when the not while the investigator was there?
Yeah, that's that's why she panicked and she decided to show her.
And so you said that the electronic stuff has ended about two years, three years now?
And last violation that we got was like two years ago.
I wasn't, I wasn't here, so I wouldn't be able to know if I remember or not remember that, so I couldn't say that.
Yes.
Um.
But it was on their pure system.
A POS. So it wasn't on anybody's personal phone or anybody's carrying around. It's more something where you have to put your finger or punch in or something like that, right?
This is the only way that they get paid is uh.
The sheet now. But the prior one, right, the POS, it was more in the computer or on like a punch in their code, not on their personal phone, right?
No, not personal point, it was a pure system when they come in, they punching.
Okay.
Their personal code and it gets tied in and out.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Jacobs, do you have any rebuttal or closing comments?
The only thing I will point out is the investigative report uh indicates that they arrived at the license premises at twenty two fifty four hours on December eighteen. Twenty twenty one, and if we look at the sign on sheet, I believe twenty two fifty four. Is eleven o'clock, close to eleven, and I see that individual signed in was at two ten ten.
So what day was that?
It's twelve eighteen twenty. So I see that the time record shows that the employee was there from four thirty to ten ten. However, again, the investigators arrived at twenty two fifty four hours. Um, and then in closing, you know, I I the employee represented that she used an electronic system that day. Uh, she did not sign the paper version. She signed in using an electronic form. Whether it was approved by the owner or not, she represented that as her time sheet. That electronic form has not been approved by the administrator, the administrator, therefore, there there is a violation.
Do you have any uh rebuttal or closing remarks?
So no, that's it, uh, do we, we do not approve any personal uh records. And as I said, that's that's the only way that they get paid. And uh, yeah, oh, I know all employees, they usually they keep their hours or time. Individual in case if the time sheet gets lost or something happened to that. Uh, we cannot stop them from that part. Uh, and I took responsibility for her to not put in her time and time. The her hours, uh, but uh I I do not uh. I never approved or never went seen their phone that they time clock in and out. And if you look at the um personal phone, that was uh probably was done so fast. That she put four thirty A M, the starting time. Yeah, so it's um, and uh we are trying our best to follow liquor commission. Uh, our liquor sale is so low, but still we want to keep it in. Hopefully later, business pick up and we make some money out of that. But as of now, probably like at most one or two beer a day is. Because mostly we don't have employees and uh we do just take and take out. Yes, that that's about it.
Yeah. Please, so Mr. Nazamlu, one quick question. So I know I'm looking at your exhibit rate you provided, is this still the same, are you still using the same form right now? For time sheets is what you provided, something similar?
Say something similar to that, yeah, that that's probably, it's just, that's what I made.
I just trying to see.
Yeah.
What you use.
It is basically that's that's it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So at this time, the commission will not deliberate.
We are back on the record allowing us time to deliberate commissioners to need how emotional.
Yes, my motion will need to find the allegations charged to sustain.
Second, there's been a motion and a second and the objection to reservations seeing and hearing none. I also vote I. The motion carries the allegations of substance.
Oh, Mr. Jacobs, your recommendation.
It's a first time violation. They recommended fines two hundred and fifty dollars.
Um, a question, Mr. Jacobs, for number one, you have a notification of what we did for that?
I believe the recommended fine on the charge one would have been three hundred and fifty dollars. Unfortunately, do you know if you remember, did they give you three hundred and fifty dollar fine for that first charge? I apologize, I will, Tom or I would have recommended three hundred and fifty dollars for the first one.
Yeah, typically when there has been a like a split proceeding like this is that we would not have reduced charge one to a decision in order that was served and required payment. It would been the decision order would be would encompass both.
Okay, so so the first charge would have been three hundred and fifty dollars. So that was for the failure to have adequate time cards. The second one is the the timekeeping we just heard, and that's two hundred and fifty.
Yeah. Okay, so my motion is going to be to approve the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars for charge one. And for charge two to issue a letter of reprimand for charge two.
Second, there's been a motion and a seconds, any objections or reservations. Hearing or seeing none, I also vote I. The motion carries a fine of three hundred and fifty dollars will be imposed for charge one and a letter of reprimand will be delivered for charge two for agenda item number thirty one.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
Thanks.
Moving into other business calling agenda item number thirty one, liquor commission statutory selection of the liquor commission administrator, Mr. Emmanuel Zibakalam. And discussion, I'll briefly summarize. I understand the commissioner Hong has more detail. But the position of administrator has been vacant in the Honolulu Liquor Commission for some time. We engaged a search to fill that position. We engaged in interviews, had a qualified pool that applied. We selected two finalists that were sent to the mayor. One of those finalists withdrew before we came for hearing. The second finalist was Mr. Emmanuel Zibakalam. We selected him to be the new administrator for Honolulu Liquor Commission. However, unfortunately, he also withdrew his application. So at this point, there are two remaining applicants from the previous pool that we were considering. And now our discussion is to consider those applicants or to do other further action.
Can I move that we actually go into executive session first to consider the higher evaluation dismissal or discipline of an officer or employee or considerations of matter affecting privacy may be involved.
Second.
There's a motion in the seconds, any objections or revisions hearing none. I also vote I. The motion carries. The commission is now in executive session.
Let's kind of go through the process that we went through because there isn't a very good written record for the present commissioners or nor which can be kind of breadcrumbs for a future measure in the process of selecting an administrator. And so we wanted to identify what went what were our obstacles and then recommendations for the future, which indeed might be present. Our current situation, which next slide. And so there was a proposed timeline that was developed on September ninth. So these are kind of the processes that follows and they preparation of each vacancy. They can see posted through the end of October, we do screening, remember, then we had an interview session on December seventh. We selected finalists and the final selection. I'll just kind of go through each one of these. Welcome to commit other commissioners just kind of comment on on how it went and maybe what we should be doing as we think about in the future. And so as part of the vacancy preparation, the job description, the timeline was created. They adjusted the timeline to reflect the desire to seek the fifth new commissioner prior to selecting an administrator.
Yeah, I do think that the decision to adjust the timeline to accommodate the commissioner that himself. In my opinion, that's a good idea. It's always better with with a five member full commission to make these types of decisions. The administrator is a a long term position. It's a very strategically important decision. So my thought at the time to accommodate that was.
And based on that issue right now, because we are two commissioners.
In the process, I think the point of having all five was good was five people would have to have to work with the upcoming person coming in as the administrator for the duration in their term for sure. Again, though, not knowing how long to have to get two more commissioners will be that might be something that we need to figure out and adjust whether or not that's something that is bound by corporation.
Yeah, that's a good point, Commissioner. And the other just one practical response to that is is we don't know how long two commissioners are going to take to be filled. This is an important division that's been making for quite some time. Acting Administrator Hori has done a good job filling in, but but we do need one sooner rather than later. So to accommodate the appointment of two commissioners and then starting that process might practically not stop.
And I don't.
All right, next slide. So the vacancy was posted. These supporting documents administrative. Did to get people to apply. Next. The initial screening, there were four. And that is something that we should probably discuss as we progress forward in this process. One of the restrictions was that you needed to be Hawaii resident and then, you know, personal. I think that's a great requirement to have, but if it limits, it's the number of candidates we have. Perhaps having somebody that had lived here would be a good set of experiences in terms of maybe somebody that had similar lived here and then went away. They had similar experiences back.
Yes, I would agree with that, Commissioner Hong. I do think that local experience, local expertise, understanding the culture and specifics in circumstances of living and working in Hawaii is important. It does seem like it may have restricted, however, the qualified applicant. So while I do believe and agree that being from here or living here, understanding this culture is an important factor that should be considered. Perhaps extending that out, one of the benefits of extending it out to the new members, you're getting diverse fight experience. You're getting a larger applicant pool. So that is certainly something like if we were to reopen the process, that's certainly something I would want.
Yes, and same on my end. Commissioner Buxton, I both believe that limiting it to Hawaii did limit the number of people you possibly could get as an applicant. But I also believe that if we also have limitations of ties, we might not expand as much as we want to. I would think that as long as someone has beyond the minimum qualifications for the position, whether they are aren't tied to Hawaii in some way, super form. Having them the ability to apply would give us a broader people to select from.
And one of the things that I've used in the past. Another possibility to search for.
Yes, I certainly agree with that.
Maui.
Oh, is that what?
Maui utilized by some headhunting services.
Is Rite Quiet? I know quiet's trying to. Outside of.
I don't believe that you, Maui's a lot more formal. I don't believe why you specifically I had hunting for.
Yes, a question I would ask is to do or use a firm like that to be made from Operation Council or other.
I'm sure episodic to the procurement process.
I'm just, I'm asking, I don't know what that process is.
If there are budgetary considerations.
Yeah, yeah. No, definitely anybody is gonna search for you or somebody to charge you. I do think that's something that you're. Broader to find out whether it can be done to use a firm and whether or not that fits in a budgetary cost.
That particular, that very specific question, which is far to our budget and the city's procurement or purchasing requirements can be answered by the acting acts. That's not a corporation kind of thing. It is as a procedural, because we undergo through that process whenever we buy anything.
So we were gonna be conducting interviews. I put this slide out there not for the benefit of the producer, but for the benefit of the public. Now, the reason why we're having this as part of the hearing is because of the sunshine. And there are two items that I wanted to highlight. And, you know, the sunshine is for us to have these discussions so that we have transparency of the process that we use in order to, in this case, administer or select the administrator. Liquor Commission. And so in general, we should be having discussions in these commission hearings. And then they have this section on permitted interactions, which allows two board members to talk without subject to the restrictions in that paragraph, basically to not vote while having discussion. I bring this up in this context of having interviews, is that our actual interview process was very curious. And outside kind of the spirit of the sunshine law, but following a letter, it was a very odd. So we split up into three different rooms to do it. And the purpose was that, you know, we wanted to be able to talk with applicants, but the applicants themselves. When you apply for a job, you don't necessarily want everybody to know that you're applying in time. Perhaps when it was down to finalists, we're gonna have a public hearing that have great privacy. But, you know, trying to conduct these types of interviews and then to have we did have the executive sessions that all five of us could know. By the time we combined all of the information that we had, it was a very awkward process. Very inefficient in terms of trying to come to an informed decision.
Yeah, I would agree, coming from a career of private practice, this is an opportunity for me to try and hire someone in the public sector and of course the sunshine laws. Part of that, I do agree that the process itself seemed a bit frustrating to me at that time. I'm having to interview. I would certainly be open to working with whoever we need for counsel or otherwise to understand sunshine laws and understand if there's a better method for doing that. Of course, we want to honor the sunshine laws, the letter of the laws and the laws and make sure that we do that as much as we can in a managed, in a public setting. But in the interview process itself, it seemed to be more of a burden that it was.
Yeah, I mean, I will echo both of Commissioner Hong's comments. It was a little bit more different than I've ever seen. We could only have two people at a time on interview. In the private sector, there's maybe the whole board like sitting up there talking to the guy, asking questions. Or it could be just one person, right? We just wanna hire a person, obviously, for such a large position as well as being part of our city. A hiring process for that. I'm hoping to figure out how we need to better make the process as easy as possible. Us to be able to come to who is the best candidate for a process.
And the reason why we're having this discussion is to follow the spirit. Go through the process of trying to find our next. Our next slide. And so this was a little bit that we do, which is a set of questions that were developed by by your chair, Chair. And we kind of mentioned the process. I think some of the other items that were controversial as to what extent do we bring our personal information in searches and due diligence to candidates. So are you allowed to Google search them? Are you allowed to look at their social media? And it's something that the public, so it seems like it's like a reasonable for the commissioners to do as part of the hiring process.
Yeah, I agree, certainly in private sector, that's very common and it's important. If you have an applicant in front of you, to understand how they present themselves to the public and social media and other situations. So I agree that that is usually a big part in our private sector interview process. Same time for public sector, we wanna make sure we treat everyone, whether we're not treated unfairly or differently from another. So that's certainly a consideration. But I do agree that that type of research is.
I agree with, again, I agree with the comments that Commissioner Hong, Commissioner Bucky stated. I don't think I would, I would think, and I don't know if this is where we need to put it. I think as part of the vetting process, qualify that doesn't qualify. Some of that vetting should be based on how they are on social media, what they've said on social media or whatever they found, put into their resume packet so that if we do that packet, we can see those things. Because then we're all seeing it as a scene, right? Versus whether or not I didn't came up and I find the right person or whether or not Commissioner Bucky or Commissioner Hong find something different. And then we have to figure out how do we get to look at that. So I think, I think, regardless to, I see into their searches, whatever it means, social media wise. That may be part of that process, applying.
I definitely think that value showing that we all have a common view of the information presented about the candidates. Been nice to widen the scope of.
Or could have seen.
Next slide. And so we met in executive session to discuss the candidates and go through multiple ways to look at and evaluate the top two candidates. I found that process was most useful, kind of settling.
I mean, I'll mimic that, I think that last executive session interview who our final candidates were was the most session, you have to hear what each person thought or each person's order of all of the candidates, which gave each person the ability to know whether or not their view matched or didn't match. Whether or not or not that person could connect with someone else's thoughts or, you know, I mean, whether or not they're not, we saw the same thing. So I felt that that was a good thing in which we were able to determine, come to a determining.
I agree, I think that was a critical point. Process, process for me at least, I didn't, I walked into the executive session not really knowing how I felt about some of all of the candidates. And it really helped hear my fellow commissioners' thoughts and feelings and perspectives towards the applicants. And it helped me to finalize my view, to be able to more confidently select the candidates. So I agree that the executive session, that was there for the purpose of determining which candidates was critical.
But I think as we move to the next session where we had the amount of the mayor who came to the day of selection, that on that day, I felt very uncomfortable. For the two candidates, I was very confident in everything that I saw with the candidates, excited with them. Could make a very good administrator. But, you know, for any, getting any public input would have been very difficult because we were making the decisions at that at that day when the candidates were announced. So I think we should look at it, we're getting how that process is getting to the finalists.
I could just, I'm sorry to keep.
Go ahead, no.
I have observed a lot of processes. So with the most recent selection of the Maui liquor director, they had a public hearing where a number of people were invited to provide public comment pro and con for any candidate or no candidate, just commenting.
Was that valuable?
Um.
Or you don't have to comment.
It was interesting. I guess you would probably, it would probably help to ask some of the Maui decision makers what they thought about that process, because this is the first time, I can recall that a formal headhunting effort was conducted. And then this is the first time I can recall that there was that sort of a public hearing on the various candidates who was conducted. I'll also comment that prior selections of administrators here, I've seen a bunch of them. They have actually conducted, they took their chances, noticed up a public, a public meeting and conducted interviews with all five present and just took a chance, I guess. Maybe that it wasn't gonna be, the disruptors weren't gonna show up and they were just gonna be able to conduct. And my recollection is that none of those efforts did that happen. So they were able, they would pick a day, it would never be on a Thursday. Actually, once I did observe them do it on a Thursday, a couple of hours before the four o'clock gavel. There are times they've scheduled that like on a Tuesday, just a different day. Posted the notice of hearing, conducted their interviews and were able to like, like just go through them that way. I'll just, that's what I've observed in the past.
I think one of the studies I would have liked to have seen in that final process being whether or not two finalists would have been able to be named or the public could make a comment on them. It seemed like when we got down to our two finalists, it wasn't really out there where they were or weren't, obviously, they made their choice. You know what I mean? I mean, because I don't know, even if we did a public and opened it up, if they didn't know who they were, we were like, who would be able to make comments for or against that person?
I don't expect to comment. So I think in that, that is what is happening. It was the first time that I felt a little time pressure that we had to make a decision sooner rather than later. And I know that there were some factors involved in the timing. I mean, it was a city resolution that needs a response and that was a driver that's a chairman. But I do wanna feel like if you get to that point, it isn't the time pressure to just choose finalists or two finalists. Feel like we need to go back and do a second round of interviews for those two finalists. Let's do it if we feel like we wanna open it up to public comment, let's do it. If we feel like we want both of those things, let's do it. The time pressure of walking into a meeting with the understanding that we had to choose someone that day, I did feel a little bit of a crunch.
I would. The thing I would add with that is as we do the process, we now need to redo the process as we do all know here. I think the only thing I would like to say is, I mean, I understand the time crunch was there, that was one of the reasons for. But I do believe that if we are going to have like two finalists, we should have, whether it be a meeting or an agenda, is have an interview process to out there, in the public, for the public able to see something. And if that's not something that someone wants to have going out there, is there a finalist? Then maybe they gotta think if they really wanna apply or not. Because you're applying for a job that you're going to be in the public, right? And if you apply, you hope you're selected, right? You're applying, that's my, my opinion. But I think that would be something that as we go through this process again, I'd like to see. Re-interview them, have questions, publicly be able to weigh in their opinion and submit.
I agree, this is a critically important, we're now, we're in a situation with public and the way we interact with public is critically important. And that administrator is going to be the face of it, so to speak. So you have to have that opportunity for the public to be able to weigh in and comment.
Commissioner Hong. And so, yeah, going into our final meeting, trying to select between two candidates and then finding out in the session one had dropped out, selection process.
Don't know if there's really much to add.
I mean, there was only one name.
And then this was just a box that we had other recommendations that we would submit to in the future and now current commissioners. So it's meant to be open for everyone here to comment.
We've made several comments and recommendations along these. I don't know if I have anything to add. I would just, I guess emphasize that what we do here is critically important and how we interact with the document is critically important. So this position in hiring, finding the right person. Any other comments? Well, this agenda item doesn't need any action items. So we will move on to the final agenda item. Calling agenda item number thirty three, appointment of vice chairperson for twenty twenty three. So I was appointed chair a few weeks ago when I didn't have a voice and was unable to object, which was strategically wise for you guys. But now it typically I would have appointed a vice chairperson at that point, but because I didn't have a voice, you graciously allowed me to continue that. I just want to make the point that, you know, there's two. Pretty much there's two empty conditions. Commissioner Mearsher is holding over, but he won't be here as much as he used to be. So it's the three of us holding down the fort for now. And I truly appreciate the work that both of you do. I appreciate your perspectives. I appreciate the diligence that you give every week. So I just want to make that a general point. As to specific appointments, I am inclined, as long as you are willing to agree, to appoint Jeff Hong as vice chairperson for twenty twenty.
I can't second my own.
I don't think this is a
You can't accept or deny.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to agenda item thirty four, liquor administrator, Ms. Rock.
I don't have anything in addition to what I circulated earlier today in my weekly report.
Excellent. That concludes today's meeting.